Good evening, everyone. My name is Mary Schreier, Deputy Mayor for Quispemsis. I'll be chairing this evening's meetings. And we are in open committee of the whole. So, the first on our agenda is procedural bylaw number 066. The initial summary of findings. And there's a lot to have discussions around tonight. And so I'm going to ask our CEO, Mr. Watson, to kick off the discussion. Mr. Watson, please.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor. And certainly not the legislative expert in the room. I will defer quickly to the clerk, but maybe just a couple of opening remarks here. First off is to offer that tonight's observation and discussion is really your first look at some of the options that we've explored. And to offer too, that our observation, and we hope that council concurs, that the committee of the whole, the closed and the regular session are really three different things, all of which have served a decent purpose. And most recently, our articulation of committee of the whole as just this, a kind of slightly less formal, open discussion about possibilities before they're brought as a formal resolution at the council table, a regular session of council, seems to have value. And lets us have a bit deeper discussion on areas of interest before feeling that we have a need to formalize and pass a resolution. So certainly, you'll see here, there's a couple of options with respect to the structure of meetings. And in addition, and just as importantly, there's conversation, or we're encouraging some conversation here about electronic meetings and electronic attendance, committee structure, as well as email polls and e-polls. Particularly important if we do change the structure of the meeting schedule, being sure about how we handle email polls and especially when not everyone agrees with an email poll, then how do we handle that are all areas of interest for conversation. I'd certainly turn it to the clerk, though, who knows the file just as well, better than I do, if she has anything else to add. And then otherwise, it would be open discussion tonight, knowing we're not looking for clear direction or decision tonight, or certainly not a resolution before regular session. This is just our first exploration, and our intent would be to gather your feedback and then bring it back at a subsequent meeting.
Thank you. Just a couple of things. CEO Watson covered pretty much everything. So, we've identified a couple sections of the procedural bylaw to discuss. From our May 6 meeting, it was the sections regarding the regular and the committee of the whole, section 8 and section 10, for review. But also, we had, or we are recommending a review of section 12 and section 27, which is the electronic meetings and electronic attendance at meetings section, and also the section on committees. So basically, just a discussion on maybe strengthening those sections a little bit more, and how you feel about that, and if you want staff to investigate a little bit further. And then also, the addition to our procedural bylaw, a new section on email polls slash e-polls. So, yeah, so I will leave it for you to discuss.
Okay. Thank you very much to both of you. And so we'll take on one section at a time, starting with the first section, talking about a discussion on our meetings, the time that they're held, and how the frequency in which they're held. So I will go according to queue, and Counselor Luck, please.
Oh, thank you, Deputy Mayor. Just, again, my comments, especially since we've changed the format under the leadership of CEO Watson. I really like the new format where we have closed, committee of the whole. But what I am finding is a lot of work is getting done in the committee of the whole before the formal meeting, but it's rushed. So my preference, especially looking ahead, we have an election next year, and I think that we want to make sure we don't make policies that create barriers for maybe new people interested in council. And you know, the reality is, is that, you know, unfortunately, people have to work. So my preference would be, you know, kind of pushing everything so that we have time to have the discussions that we need at the 5 to 6, and then have the official meeting start at 7. I think historically, we were putting so much in the agendas, it made sense to kind of push it back. But now that we're doing so much stuff up front, and it's a challenge for people to get here earlier, my preference would be 5 to 6 would be closed, then 6 to 7, committee of the whole, and then our formal meeting, which usually runs, since we've started that new process, has been quite quick because a lot of the discussion and work has been done in the other meetings. So anyway, that's my thoughts. And I'm fine with adding extra meetings. It looks like that one of the proposals was to also add a second meeting in March and June. Again, we just spread out the work a little bit more, you know, throughout the year, so I mean, I see some value in that. But I'd like to hear what other counselors here think. Thanks.
Thank you for your comments, Counselor Luck. And we'll go next to Counselor Miller.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor. Thank you, Counselor Luck. Looking at these, I see a couple of things that I like right away. One, we're down to one meeting a month, right? So versus sometimes, we do have a packed agenda, but we do have meetings that are less than an hour. So I really, really like that. But I also think, and I'm jumping a little bit, and I'll just touch on it because that's part of my comments, but by doing more email polls and things in between, we can get a lot of stuff done also quicker and not have to have it in the meeting. I'm in preference for the next election because you've got different people running. We've got a lot of people that may work to 4:30 or 5:00 that may work at St. John. We've got some, a lot of people considering, or companies considering four-day work weeks, which will then extend those hours as well. And so I'm in preference of number 2 versus 3, and I'll give you the exact, 1 at 7 o'clock. Committee of the whole, things are heavy, we can start at 5:00. If not, we can start at 6:00. And the reason I picked number 2 over number 3, number 3, it's the first week of March. So, you know, my kids are at a different age, but people that also work in areas that kids are on March break, they generally have to work those weeks. And anybody on staff, too, that has any kids, it gives that time off. So option 2 versus 3 is just a couple flipping of the days. And so I, and also, again, if anything's urgent, I'm jumping to the other one, the email polls make it really easy, and especially if we can do a lot of things electronically. We could be in Aurelia, we could be in wherever, so that's why I do that. But I think at 7 o'clock, if people have a job, like for us that are working right now, we're lucky, we either work at home, or we can try to work at home. For today, I'm lucky because I think half of my company's on vacation. It's, it's, in Quebec, it's the construction holiday, where I don't understand why they have construction holiday in August, but, and I work Eastern Time Zone, too, which is tougher for me, right? So I really like option 2 versus 3, and that's it, and I'll wait till we get to the next ones. Thanks.
Thank you, Counselor Miller. Counselor Thompson, do you have your light on?
No.
No, okay. So we'll go next to Counselor Bigger, please.
Thank you very much. I just wanted to confirm, am I, maybe, under option 1, the second main bullet says council shall hold committee of the whole meetings in the council chambers at the Quispemsis Town Hall at 6:00 PM. And then it goes into the first Tuesday of every month, except for January, March, June, July, August. But is, am I wrong? Shouldn't that be, isn't that the second part of when regular meetings happen under that option? Not committee of the whole?
I believe the committee.
You see what I mean? The first bullet references regular meetings happen on the, on the third Tuesday of every month. And then the next bullet says committee of the whole meetings happen at the same time on the first Tuesday of every month, except for January, March, June.
The two separate meetings.
But doesn't that kind of imply that we have a regular meeting at 6:00 PM on the third Tuesday of the month, and committee of the whole on, is that what you're getting at?
I'll just let Lisa explain, please.
Okay.
Yes, you're correct. That is the option, is to have one regular meeting a month, and one committee of the whole meeting a month.
Okay, so I, I, I quite like, I can take a couple of these options and sort of blend them together. There's a few things that I like out of every option. I'm fine with the 7 o'clock start. I really like the idea of one meeting a week, or one meeting a month, and then a committee of the whole meeting separate, so we can spend more time on committee of the whole. I really like that. And I also really like that we would keep the March meeting open, that we only have one in March. So this is just conversation. We can make any scenario we want, and take the good from each one, and add it, and you know, maybe committee of the whole starts at 6:00. And our council meetings start at 7:00 when they happen, depending on what the majority feels like. So I've not seen any more lights, so, oh, Counselor, oh, there it is, just came up. Counselor Dunlop, please.
Thank you. I was just gonna say, with anything, sometimes things, you know, need to change periodically. And I do think that option 2 is a good option, but I also agree with what the deputy mayor said, that it's, you know, possible that we could, excuse me, blend a couple of them together, but you know, as it sits right now, I think option 2 is, you know, the better, the better one. You know, I've said it before, we, you know, we would, I believe under that option, we'd have the one meeting a month for the regular meeting, but I mean, even if it has to start at 7 o'clock, it's not the end of the world. It's, I mean, it's, I can't see us staying until 11 o'clock, especially with the new system, where we're doing a lot of the work ahead of time. So I do think that the second option is a better option, in my opinion, and that's what I would, I would love to go with. But, you know, taking into consideration that this is just a, you know, information gathering conversation at the moment.
Great. Counselor Luck, did you have one more comment?
I just had a question, and I think I know the answer, that's why I had to turn my button off. I know that the regular council meetings have to be announced. Does the closed meetings, is that why? Like, you know, in terms of us having a, like a, an absolute start time for our closed, that's, like, it's not like we can say, well, let's have a committee of the whole around 6 o'clock, depending on how much we have to talk about and close. Like, I'm just wondering, like, it is a start that we say, no, this is going to be publicized, and we have to start at 6 o'clock.
And that would be a legislative?
Yeah.
Question.
Okay. Thanks.
Currently, our procedural bylaw is silent on the start time for the committee of the whole. So this would introduce a set start time for our committee of the whole. The closed session would be whenever there's items that are necessary to speak about enclosed.
I think that that's something that we should think about, because, like, for example, you know, sometimes it's really hard to know. Like, we might say, we have a lot in closed because it's just the topics, and we're rushing through it because we've now put our stake in the sand to say, 6 o'clock, we have to start our committee of the whole, versus keeping it as is. And this is just more so brainstorming, but I like that we promote 7 o'clock, on the nose, we're starting open session, or council, regular council. But it gives us that flexibility as needed, that maybe it's 45 minutes of closed, 15 minutes of committee of the whole, because it depends on our needs. So I think if we start to put a time on the committee of the whole, we might be sitting around, twiddling our thumbs, waiting for the 6 o'clock, because just our needs are going to change. So anyway, it's just something to consider, if it's not something that's mandated, that we have to publicize, the time of that, like, you know, we could then decide, similar to what we do now. So anyway, thanks.
Everybody's goal here is to optimize our time and get as much done as quickly as possible. Counselor Thompson, and then I'll go to Mr. Watson.
It went off. Okay, sorry. I guess I, I'm looking through this, and I don't see any option for sort of what it is now. You know, that committee of the whole starts at a certain time. I'm not particularly happy about opening, open session, or, you know, open session at 7:00. I think 6 worked perfect. But I just don't see any option here where it is exactly the way it is now. So I don't see, see that here. So it's kind of throwing me, because I'm like, well, you know, I guess, I guess my option would be to have it exactly as it is now. I mean, we don't, we don't have to start until 5:30, or whatever the case may be. Or, and start open at 6:00, the same as we are now. And I understand that people have to work, but everybody seems to be, to be able to be here for 6:00, even though there's a lot of people that work. So, for, for, so it's, and I know that there is some discussion that goes on earlier. There's, there's not a whole lot, but there is, I mean, as you can see what was on there, there wasn't a whole lot there. But I just don't see any options there for that.
Point taken, status quo is not on there, and so that, Mr. Watson. I'd like to go to Mr. Watson first, and then back to you, Counselor Miller, if that's okay with you. Okay, we'll go to Mr. Watson, then to Mr. Miller.
Super, thank you, Deputy Mayor. And in response to both Counselor Luck's comment about timing, and maybe to speak to Counselor Thompson's interest in status quo as well, the only piece that I'm interested in making sure we stay true to is our commitment to live stream our committee of the whole meetings. So that means we do have an obligation to share with people when that will be occurring. So there is a bit of a balance there to be had. But that said, routinely, the clerk, the mayor, Deputy Mayor and I are meeting prior to a meeting to kind of figure out what does the close look like in terms of timeframe, so we could reasonably assert, yeah, it looks like half an hour we need for close at time, which would predate or pre-time that meeting night. So anyway, just a consideration there in terms of the overall mix. And Counselor Thompson's quite right, status quo doesn't appear here. It remains an optional. This is definitely an open conversation, and no obligations to shift if that's not the will of council. That said, it would be our observation that, I think it came up earlier in a bit, in an earlier comment, is that sometimes our committee of the whole meetings, although they're really good discussions, we're getting compressed there. So we're not really able to dive into the details of a topic that probably deserves that level of detail and that little debate, before we're now needing to hop into our main regular session, where it's a little more formal, and, you know, a resolution and votes, and let's move on. So I think there's an interest for sure in shifting something, so that you have that opportunity in committee of the whole, recognizing that the closed piece can be well before that entirely, and we can figure out how much time is allotted to that for each meeting. And just a couple of observations, and again, no decisions expected, and I really appreciate the feedback so far.
Thank you, Mr. Watson. And just on that note, for instance, the pending agenda, we never really get to that, do we, in committee of the whole? We're always, you know, we like to ask a question on the pending agenda, but we're not, we're always running out of time. So Counselor Miller, please.
Yeah, same, thank you, Deputy Mayor. I guess, and I liked all the comments there, and I'm just gonna throw just another idea to, unfortunate, maybe unfortunately, but, oh, you choose the fireboard. We moved closed to 5:30, just because everybody there does work, and that's the time that everybody could get there. So maybe it's a little bit of blend. We start closed at 5:30, committee of whole, I know right now, we're talking a lot in committee of whole, and maybe it should stay that way, is if, if we have a good 45 minutes for it, is that enough for, you know, do we start the regular at 6:30 instead of 7:00? And again, I'm just speaking for myself, getting 5 o'clock is tough to get to, and then when it gets pushed down to 4:30 or whatever, it's even tougher. I don't know who's gonna be on that next year's council, I don't know any of that stuff, but I'm just going from the fireboard thing, where, and some of them are self-employed, so they can get there a bit quicker, too. But it's, 5:30 was the, you know, we have some people that work in town, so 5:30 was the starting for the close that we changed it to. But doesn't mean that we can't, you know, setting a set time for the committee of the whole, if we think we're always gonna have an hour's worth, and, or 45 minutes, and that's fine. We can always stretch it other times, but we can always have special meetings, too. If we're having three meetings now, or one meeting per month, if we have, need to have a special meeting, that's fine, too. So no, again, just like Counselor Thompson said, you know, status quo should be an option, too, like, for those who want status quo, right? So that was just another, after I heard that, I said, well, you know, maybe we start at 5:30 closed versus, so anyways, more to ponder, sorry.
Counselor Bigger, did you have one more comment? Okay, and we'll wrap it up, and then we'll move on to the others, so that we make sure that we have time to discuss the other ones at hand.
Yeah, thank you. I'll just quickly say, then, that I, I, like Counselor Thompson, my own personal druthers would be to just more or less stay with what we have currently, but that being said, I do appreciate all the considerations that are being suggested here. And one thing that I would not favor is the idea of reducing our number of regular meetings, certainly. I think that, when I think about other municipalities nearby, I, and in the summertime, I find that we actually, I feel as though I lose touch a little bit with a lot of the issues by virtue of only having the one regular meeting per month. And now that's compounded by the fact that everybody goes their own ways with vacations and whatnot, you know? But in the context of us looking at something like KV Go, which arrived here across the summer, the bounce of the summer, you know, kind of an important thing, we're trying to get it going, trying to get it started, and also, and that's in the summertime, and so that with only one regular meeting, and then my mother-in-law passed, and so I wasn't at the July meeting, so now it's been two months since I've been at a council meeting. So, you know, I wouldn't favor going to one regular meeting monthly, notwithstanding the committee of the whole side of things. So I mean, I understand we're not talking about sort of what we have in the summertime. I also would just point out that the issue we have before us later on pertaining to that letter that was sent by a concerned resident about a particular subdivision, seems to, you know, be raising some concerns around, like, oh, is council getting enough time to really review things ahead of time and whatnot? And so not to prejudge what the truth of that is, the veracity of that is, but anyway, I just would continue to contend for at least two regular meetings monthly, aside from the ones we've already determined that we don't.
Thank you very much, Counselor Bigger. Before we wrap up, I just wanted to give Counselor Olson an opportunity, if you wanted to weigh in, Counselor Olson, your comments, free yes or nay, if you don't want to, that's fine, too. I have to turn your mic on.
Thank you for, thank you for recognizing my presence. I think, I guess the point is, is that they're suggesting on the third, on the third of each month, the third Tuesday of January, March, June, July, and August, that there be only one regular meeting, you know, that's only five months. So the other seven months of the year, we're gonna be having two meetings, two regular meetings.
Correct.
So we're only talking about eliminating them in five, in five. So I think, I think that's, that's fine with me. And, you know, I recognize also Counselor Miller's ongoing concerns about 7 o'clock start, so I'll leave that up to the majority of council to consider. Other than that, I'm easy, either one.
Thank you, Counselor Olson. Lots of great discussion. Looks like we might be engulfed and get a hybrid out, and see what happens. Okay, so the next section, electronic meetings and electronics attendance, I think it's pretty straightforward, the goal to ensure the bylaw correctly reflects technological advancements, allowing for more flexible and accessible to, accessibility to our meetings. Not sure, I will turn this over to the clerk, if there's something that you wanted to expand on this one. We're still on the first.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, so I'm gonna ask the town clerk to elaborate on the electronic meetings. Okay, there we go. I'm good.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor. So I just noticed, noticed a typo on this, and it just caught my eye. So this section 12, electronic meetings and electronic attendance at meetings, was basically maybe just to do a little bit of research, and this was to bring to council's attention and see if that's what they would like staff to do. That's why that was included in this staff report, just to review that section of our procedural bylaw, just to be sure that we are in line with some other municipalities, and check with our IT to be sure that our bylaw reflects what we're currently using technology, our technology, and so on, so that, you know, for the next few years, our procedural bylaw is strong.
I know that sometimes you, when you're attending a meeting electronically, you have your iPad in front of you, and then you have your laptop for your Zoom call, and even your phone sometimes, sometimes you have three, three tech devices going at once. So Counselor Miller, please.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor. And I could be wrong, but I believe in our bylaw, it states that if you're gonna attend electronically, we're supposed to advise by 24 hours before, 48 hours. I think that just needs to be looked at, because we've all had instances where, and nobody here has fought it, but we've come in electronically, but technically is against, against the bylaw, because something happens at home, or you just can't be here for good reasons. So that's just one little thing. But I also think in there, we, we should have something about, you can only do so many per year unless there's an agreement for the rest of council, because having somebody just attend everyone electronically would, wouldn't be in the spirit of, I don't think, because I think there's a lot more done when, when you're here in person yourselves than just always doing it electronically, so.
I believe our current bylaw is 6 electronically we're allowed, our procedural bylaw, but correct me if I'm wrong, I believe that that's what we passed a while ago. Oh, and, and depends on the changeover, whether it's January 1st, or, okay, that's, did you want to go ahead?
I was just gonna correct.
It is 6?
No, it's 5 in our.
It's 5, oh, okay. I thought, okay. So that's a conversation we can have. Moving on to the committees, I'm really quite excited about this section, because I think there's a lot of work that we can do here with our committees, and how they're structured, and succession planning, and, you know, I think it's so important for people to get experience, and the only way we can get experience is if we get an opportunity to move along into different areas that may not be our expertise, but certainly, you know, we can learn from that, and then we bring more value back to the council table. So I'm really excited about this review of the committees, and how we're gonna go about it. So I'll start with Counselor Donovan, please.
Thank you, and this is just a, just a thought. I know on the library board right now, we're sort of developing a legacy document to guide future, you know, board members and boards. And one of the things that we've discussed in, in And one of the things that we've discussed in, in, you know, great length is when a vacancy does appear, which happens periodically, it, there should be a opportunity for the board, regardless of what board it is, to offer to council, you know, a, a page saying, you know, this is what we're looking for in a future board member. So for example, if you've got a, a board, a li- library board full of all lawyers, maybe you're looking for somebody with a marketing background. And I, and I understand that, you know, you can't, we kinda have to be grateful for what we do receive when it comes to volunteers. But I think that might help strengthen, strengthen some of our boards when, you know, the library board can send a letter to the mayor saying, we're currently in need of somebody with a fundraising background for our next board choice. And then when the town puts out, you know, an offer saying, we're looking for somebody to join the library board, do you have experience with fundraising or marketing? Then at least that narrows that down and it gets people that are better suited for positions into the positions that they need to be. So I, that's my personal preference is to do something, or at least have some sort of expectation when it comes to that, that we can pass along to our boards. But I just know we're dealing with that currently in, in our sort of legacy document. So I think it might be good to sort of have that across the board instead of one committee at a time.
Gives the volunteers more of an outline as well as to what they're applying to. I believe the next one line was Counselor Luck and then Counselor Miller.
Thank you. So yeah, I'm, I'm thrilled that we're gonna be fleshing this out a little bit. And I actually kinda have a two-part question. I noticed that in our regular meeting, oh no, actually, it's after this. It's in this meeting. There is going to be a question around a policy on management support and oversight of volunteers. So I didn't know if this was part of that policy, or if it would be part, part of this policy. But that's, anyway, so I'm not sure where it fits. But I guess if it does fit in the other one, then we can have a discussion then. But I agree, I wholeheartedly reinforce what Counselor Donovan said. We are having the same conversations on the police board, where, you know, again, there's just, we've done a skills matrix and we're looking for certain skills. And, you know, I mean, that's good board governance when you're looking at, you know, what are the skill sets that we need? And some of it could be generic, but we still need to know that. So, you know, I'd like to see us kind of do a bit more of that. But also in terms of, you know, improving transparency around the process, the rationale for selection, how we recruit people, having some type of rubric, the terms that they serve, just like all in one place. And again, I don't know if it's here, but I actually, when I was reading the information for tonight as prep, I went online to try and find out if it was already there. So I kinda feel like it would be nice if it was somewhere. I just don't know where. But it would all, it would be nice if it was in one location. So if it's not meant to be, or if it's not appropriate that it's in this particular policy, I think that, I guess, based on this conversation, it would still be really nice to have that, just for transparency. So as a resident, if they say, oh, number one, I, I mean, I know we list the boards and we say who's on them right now, but in terms of like, what did they do? What's the terms? Like all that kinda stuff, just to be transparent. And how are the people selected? Because right now, you can just go into our website and say, I wanna volunteer, put your application in. But I kinda feel like we should be being a bit more specific in terms of recruitment for specific things. And I, I noticed over the last few years, we're doing more of that, where we're posting on social media when an opening becomes available versus just kinda hoping someone notices it and says, oh, I wanna volunteer, puts their name in, and anyway. So I'm really happy to see that we're gonna flush that out. I think that there's lots of opportunity there. And then again, to my other point, I'm not sure if it fits here or fits under the policy that's coming up in 4B. Thank you.
Privacy issues with CRVs and Counselor Miller, please.
Thank you. I think in the, in the next term, we should try to elevate the, the people that are in these roles. Even on our website, who's on our board, what do they do? I mean, again, it's up to whatever they wanna put in there. And maybe even once a year, have them come and talk to council, whether it's enclosed or whatever. You know, what's working, what's not working? What do they feel left out? Are we, are they, are we giving them enough support? Do we talk to them after we get them on the, these boards or not? Because there has been a lot of change in different spots, but let's find out, you know, are we giving the right information? At least are they, do they have the opportunity to get the information? Hey, we're doing a, our budget next week and it's about police and fire. It's an open session. If you wanna, if you don't wanna show up, great, but you can watch it online, just to get them more up to speed on different things. But it would be really nice, you know, once a year to get a, a little comment back, back from each one of those individuals. And again, if, if they like to, you know, on our, on our, you know, here's our counselors, we got everything else, here's our staff, but here's also the committees and, and people within your community that are, are working for you in these different, and they may or may not like that. That may be a different discussion, but I think a lot of them do some fantastic work. So it's, but, you know, I, I know the names of some of the people, but I, to, you know, what are they doing on each of those boards? Is it, it's, anyways, it's just, I think, to the other comments, it's, it's tough to get some of these people, but some of the people are really good, really good, and, and thanks.
Our volunteers and the hard work they do. And to your point, a lot of time, public don't realize how many people are out there working on their behalf every day as a volunteer and Chris Pampas. So I just, Counselor Donovan, did you have another comment? And then to Mr. Watson. Thank you.
I was just gonna say that I do agree with Counselor Miller's point. Because, you know, from working on, I mean, I'm on the, the fireboard and I'm on the, the, I was gonna say police, thank goodness I'm not on the police board. I'm on the library board. And the one thing I have noticed is usually, you know, when it comes to certain issues, some of the, the, the town-appointed people will say, can you, can you ask your council this? Or can you see if your council could possibly do this? I want them to, to have an avenue or feel more comfortable actually approaching council. Because I don't wanna feel like we're, you know, we're a board. I don't wanna feel as if I'm just some sort of person there that directs back to the, to the council. I want them to be able to, to feel like they have a, an avenue to, to, to present to council. Just like, you know, Counselor Miller said, if they can come in and, or at least get an invitation to come in and watch certain things or, or meet us, or whatever the case may be. But I, I definitely think that's a really good idea.
Thank you. And Mr. Watson, would you like to wrap it up? And then we're gonna move on to email unless, Counselor Miller, you're good, right? Counselor Miller, you're fine?
Oh, sorry.
Okay, so Mr. Watson, and then we'll move on to the email poll. Just watching the time.
Yep, thank you very much, Deputy Mayor. Won't spend much time on it. I think fair to say the clerk and I have some homework to do on this one, just to kinda frame this up. So with thanks, the only thing I would offer, and, and not to take away from the comments that have been made, I think they all have very strong value, and I am confident we can build the pieces you're referencing into the bylaw. I, I guess I'm a structure guy and I'm kinda wanting to step one step back as part of this process and ask ourselves with a really critical eye, do we need twenty-nine boards, committees, and commissions to support the town? I think in some cases, some of those committees have been struck and may have served a purpose, but we haven't deliberately said, the mandate of that committee is now over. We've accomplished what we expected to do and therefore it's no longer relevant. Or there might be appropriate combinations of some that would make sense too. So I would just ask that as we work towards this, and recognizing the administrative support to manage twenty-nine boards, commissions, and committees is non-insignificant. So especially if we wanna do a really good job at that by promoting our members and making sure we're using company-based matrix for, for recruitment and those kinds of things, all absolutely valid tools, and I support fully. I think there may need to be a conversation around how many of these things we're supporting and how, how to make sure we do it well, and/or resource it up so that we can support all twenty-nine. So I think a, a conversation to come, but absolutely welcome feedback and we'll promise to bring something back to you next time.
That's great. Thank you very much. We'll move on, and I, I agree, maybe twenty-nine's not the number. I don't, wouldn't wanna guess what the number might be. So we're gonna move on to email polls, and I would just note that there are suggestions that the town clerk has made, and I think they're great suggestions, gives us food for thought. If there's anything else on the suggestions that you want to add, or if there's something in the suggestions that you feel is not necessary, we can let that discussion roll right now. Counselor Donovan.
I just have a quick comment. The one suggestion here that I do think is fantastic. I was just too far away from it, sorry. I just wanted to quickly comment. One of the suggestions I think is really good is the unanimous consent of the, of the quorum. You know, if it's not, if it's, if it's not unanimous consent, then that, that item would be referred back and we would do it at a regular meeting. I think that's very fair. And I mean, most times I feel like we do definitely can get to that unanimous consent. But if, if there's a, a period where we can't, then maybe that's the best possible way is to deal with it in person. So I just, I love that a lot, so I just wanted to commend staff on that.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor. For me, I think email poll, if it's something that's large, we should have a call, and we could still do it electronically, but get it done right away. In an email poll, I, I also think if we're not unanimous, I'm gonna go a bit contrary to Counselor Donovan, depending on the, I mean, if we're talking about something quite small, is whether it's not unanimous, it should go ahead anyways, right? But again, if it's something that's contentious or large va- value, we should have a, we should have a, a call as, as well, just, just kinda what we did on the, the last one regarding that we weren't unanimous and we had a, we end up having a call. Depending on, especially now that if, if we're only doing once a month, waiting an extra three weeks or four weeks could be a long time to get, depending on the urgency of the topic. So if the topic is urgent, it should just be a, a quick, a quick meeting as well. But I think even if we're still not unanimous, we don't have to wait to the next meeting because we probably still won't be unanimous at that meeting, right? So, you know, it's just a side comment.
Poll, but I, I do agree that, I, I think a Zoom call sometimes can be done very quickly. And it's always to hear from our staff, you know, firsthand, it, instead of, they can really zoom on, in on the point sometimes, like in the tone and the definition of what exactly is the, the urgency. It's not always conveyed in a staff note, so sometimes a Zoom call. I, I don't know if you would include that in email poll. We did say accompanied by a staff, what, did it say a staff note or briefing? Or could it be, or a Zoom call? And/or? Because that, I think that would. I don't know if it would be a special meeting or not, if you're just dealing with the one issue. Maybe a Zoom call is considered a special meeting? I just, I'll just put you on speaker so people can hear you, just as. Just a minute, Ms. Counselor Biggar, I just wanna get you on speaker.
Oh, sorry. I was just saying that I believe that, to me, the distinction is whether or not discussion will ensue by virtue of coming together on a Zoom call, for example. Whereas it seems an email poll is sort of an up or down vote on one particular item, and there's no sort of more nuance to it than that. So I wonder if, you know, we essentially are kind of imagining more of a special meeting. But, I mean, if we could, if we could corral the horses enough to get on Zoom and everyone say, yes, no, you know, whatever. But that's, to me, that's the distinction.
Thank you. Point well taken. Counselor Olson, please.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor. I just wanted to suggest that we shouldn't all get hung up on the word unanimous because that means that we're in a perfect world, and we're not. There's gonna be personal opinions around seven or eight people voting. And I, I hope that the information that we receive should be complete as possible. So that means the staff and the CAO's input that should clarify any concerns so that all of the information is before you and you're not holding off or maybe having a negative vote because you think there's more information to be added. So just a thought.
Thank you. I'm just watching the time because we have one more after this. So we have two people in line. Counselor Donovan, are you still wanting to make a point? Counselor Luck? One comment from Counselor Luck, and then we'll move on to the last. Then we can, is that okay, Tim, when we have enough time? Okay, Counselor Luck, please.
Okay, thank you. I just, I agree. I think Counselor Olson brings up a very good point about unanimous. The one thing though is like listening to the conversations. I think what concerns me is that if we take that away, sometimes it's just that someone needs a bit more discussion. And I, I, I kinda worries me that, you know, because I'm on the fence, or I'm just, you know, it, to me, it's just, it allows us to come together because not everyone is unanimous. Yet, and then if they were still not unanimous, that's okay. But I feel like because it's kind of a hard and fast, like yes or no, black and white, to me, I like the fact that it triggers, okay, we need to have some discussion, more discussion to either make sure everyone's comfortable with whatever the outcome is. So, you know, not always do we have to agree, but I think because it, there's no opportunity for that discussion, I, I really like that, that would trigger discussion. Thanks.
To our town clerk.
Just further to that, I think also just the transparency of the, this language makes it clear that if, if there is, if it's not unanimous, then it is a special meeting to allow that discussion. And then we can, if it's a special meeting and it's open, then it, it is streamed at that time and so on as well. So that, that would be making it very clear.
Should we move on to the last? And this is really an administrative policy for the staff. And I'll let Mr. Watson talk about this. And Counselor Luck's question about volunteers may come up under this. We may run, run out of time. Two more minutes? What do we have? Two minutes if we're quick. So I'll leave it to Mr. Watson and we may have to come back.
Perfect. Thank you, Deputy Mayor, and I promise not to burn hundred and twenty seconds here. There are two new policies being suggested by staff. And the recommendation is that both fall under the authority of the administration versus the authority of council for this particular, for these particular purposes. Number one is a respectful workplace policy, generally used in corporate world for sure, sets the expectations for mutually respectful relationships between staff at all levels of the organization. And it roughly aligns the code of conduct for council. It treats sanctions a bit differently just by virtue of the employment relationship being one of progressive discipline and/or administration of a collective agreement. But where this applies only to staff and addresses the internal workings of the organization, again, the recommendation is that that one stays with me and ELT as an administrative policy. The second is management, support, and oversight of volunteers. We currently don't have a standardized organization-wide policy or practice for folks who volunteer with us and/or those that may be paid modest stipends to help us out for special events and those kinds of things. So as a result, there's a small, but I've, in my opinion, tangible liability to the town from that absence, and I'd like to address that. How these folks are onboarded, what qualifications we expect, how they are compensated, if at all, how they're supervised, those kinds of things would all help us out. So the proposed policy would be applicable to staff and volunteers and reflect the internal workings, again, of the organization. So again, CAO and ELT approval authorities recommended. But in accordance with our earlier discussion on policies, it's your call about which authority is appropriate. Our recommendation is that admin would be the approval authority for both of those, but we'd take, certainly take your direction. Thank you, Deputy Mayor.
Time for one comment, and then we have to close.
Thank you. So I agree with the respectful workplace, that it is administrative policy. In light of our discussion around committees and those are volunteers, I'm just wondering at this point, if we don't put our stake in the sand and we keep that one as it gets flushed out as administration and council? Because we may find as you start to build it, it does bleed over into council. So anyway, that's kinda my two cents is, we won't know until we know, but I just think in light of what we just talked about, in terms of once we start fleshing out committees, those are volunteers, we may find that it would be valuable to have committee or council feed into that policy as well. Thank you.
No, I just have a motion that Committee of the Whole recommend council authorize the policy authority recommended by staff. the policy authority recommended by staff as presented under business arising.
We're, unless, we're on the question? If we're not ready, Councilor Luck? Councilor Luck, Councilor Bigger, we have a motion on the floor on the question. I was asking on the question, there was no one on the question? Councilor Luck?
I guess I feel like this is a great example where we're rushed because, you know, I guess I put out a comment that I would like to get some feedback on, but now there's a motion on the floor totally contradicting my suggestion. So I will be voting no, not because I don't think it's a good idea. I guess it's just I would like to have some flexibility before we put it into motion that it's all or nothing. Thank you.
We're running out of time. I think we're going to have to come back to this on the question. Unless Mr. Watson has something, I, I think we're going to have to come back. Okay? We have a question. You're on the question, you want to ask a question? Okay, we're going to come back for five minutes at the end. Okay. Motion to adjourn? We'll be coming back. Okay, motion to adjourn. Moved, moved by Councilor Olson. Okay, we have a six o'clock start. Let's go. Thank you. Sorry about that, that was sort of rushed at the end, but I'd rather come back and make sure that everybody's good, and, yeah, okay, let's do that.
Yeah, that's fine. Because we were so close, you wanted to, but I mean, you're right. Yeah.